Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order on February 11th, 2025, at 6:31 PM. It's great to have everyone here tonight. We will begin by having our pledges of allegiance led by Mr. Jeff Boras, and I will lead our invocation. If everyone will please stand.
Join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please pray with me. Our most heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow on us so greatly every day. We thank you for everyone that came out tonight to either see their students recognized or to have a part in our meeting. We thank you for sending your son, and we ask that you guide our team of seven tonight to make the best decisions for our students and our staff alike here in Coppers Cove. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let me see there. John, would you read that statement? It's on your iPad.
Okay. Mission Statement. The mission of Coppers Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Now, we have the public forum, and we have someone who has signed up, Brian Hawkins and Sharon Tabor, and they are representing the Syntex Exchange Club. And in particular, they're going to present the In God Re Trust posters for all schools.
You probably need all pre-.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, Board, Citizens. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Brian Hawkins. I'm with the Exchange Club here in central Texas. Several months ago, we took on a project to try to put posters for the In God Re Trust national motto in our schools. We started off with our administration building and made a presentation a few months ago, and then we decided we wanted to put one in each school in our city. So that's what we're here to do tonight, to present these to all of the principals. We have a plaque for each one of them to put in their schools. We thank them so much for putting this up, and it is our intention now, as we move forward with the permission of the school board, to start to raise the funds to put these in every classroom in this district.
Wow.
That's going to take a while because there's a lot of classrooms in this district, but that is our goal. But this is a great first step for us, to have all of these on every campus in our district. We think it's an important message to send to our kids. We appreciate a school district that supports us in doing this. There is actually a state law that allows for this to be done if anybody asks you, so we just appreciate that opportunity, and we want to say this tonight to say thank you to our school board, to our teachers, our principals, for all you do for our kids. I've got three kids that grew up in this district from start to finish, and I couldn't be happier with it. So it's an honor for me to be able to be here tonight to present these to you. So thank you for receiving them, and we're going to continue to work to make sure you have more of them in your schools.
Thank you. Could you ask you that?
Get together for a picture. Yeah.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
My pleasure, John. Thank you. Appreciate it, too.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. That was sweet. You don't have to do that.
Appreciate it.
See you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
We'll keep working hard.
You bet.
Y'all, good night.
My exchange club.
All right. The next item is our public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report. Mrs. Amanda Crowley will be giving that for us.
Dr. Hawkins, thanks to the board. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. This is the Texas Academic Performance Report for 2324, and we'll go over quite a few sections. I'm going to hit mostly the highlights tonight for you. The report is at every campus in the front office, and it is online at our website for every campus, and we also house a copy here in the district office. So we have seven sections that we'll hit tonight, mostly the top four are our student performance indicators, our campus performance objectives, and the student performance post-secondary indicators. And in section one, I'm going to talk to you about our ratings, our P E M S information, our student assessment data, and a wide range of information that is published, you know, out to the public about our schools and our accountability and how we're doing. So first, I want to tell you that our district, you know, typically they're rated on A to F system, but due to legislation and litigation and all those things with A to F, this year we do not have an A to F letter rating that has been released. So those have not been issued by the state, and our distinction designations are also delayed. So once we have those, we will definitely get those out to you, but right now those are delayed, so the taper does not include those for this time. I will tell you, we do have some things to celebrate regarding special education, and so there are four different ways that special education is rated in our district is meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, or needs substantial intervention. In 23, 22, 23, our special education determination status was needs assistance. There were some few things that they ask us to work hard on, and I'm happy to report to you tonight that the district's 2024 special education determination status is meets requirement, which is the highest indicator that we can earn for special education in CCISD. So something to celebrate there. Also, just wanted to explain a little bit about the way the STAR performance ratings work. We have approaches, which is the approaches grade level. We have meets, which is the meets the standard, so that's a little bit of higher standard that the state holds our students to, and then masters, which is mastering all areas of the STAR test. So that's very difficult to achieve, and we do have students that do that each year. So these indicators are reported for all assessments, all grades, and all subjects, and I'm going to go over those with you tonight. So for STAR performance, all grades, all subjects. For 2024, 77% of our students were at approaches, 49% at meets, and 18% masters. There's always a little bit of deviation kind of around scores from year to year, but I always like to compare us to the state and the region, and we like to brag in CCISD that we like to outperform the state and the region. We want to do better than our peers and those in the state, and we're proud here in Coppers Cove of the education that we provide. So for STAR performance for reading, we are at 78% approaches, 54% meets, and 19% masters. Then for all grade levels for mathematics, we are at 75% for the district at approaches, 41% meets, and 14% masters. And then in science, we are at 76% approaches, 44% meets, and 13% masters. So at any time, if y'all have questions and you want to ask, please don't hesitate to stop me, and I'll explain. This is social studies, all grade levels. We do take social studies in eighth grade and in 11th grade. We're at 83% for the district at approaches, 57% meets, and 31% masters. For academic growth, our students are growing and achieving more. This is one year's growth in Coppers Cove ISD. So for fourth grade reading, we have 75% of our students achieving growth, 61% at fourth grade math, fifth grade RLA or reading, 71%, and math, 69% at fifth grade. So that is great news that our students are continuing to grow. You'll see those growth measures in fourth grade through eighth grade, and then English One for reading, and then fourth grade through eighth grade, and Algebra One for math. For academic growth, let's see, here are the difference on these. This is for sixth grade for reading. We are at 45% for sixth grade math, 29% for seventh grade RLA, 52% seventh grade math, 77%, and eighth grade reading, 64%. And then our end-of-course exams, we are at for district for academic growth, English One, 69% growth, 67% for English Two, and for Algebra One, we're at 73% growth. So lots of good growth that our students are achieving, and then some areas that we want to continue to work. Yes?
Didn't they change the standards a little bit? Because I mean, it kind of looks like we went downhill on some of it, but I really don't think we did.
Some of the growth, if you look at like seventh grade math, for example, our students now take pre-algebra in seventh grade, so that offsets it a little bit. Some of that is our students don't take the seventh grade math STAR, they take the eighth grade math STAR in seventh grade. And then for Algebra One, we have Algebra One for all eighth graders in CCISD, which is not, that's not common, but we want our students to be able to achieve way more when they get to high school and take four years' worth of, you know, higher level math. So that offsets it a little bit, so you'll look and you'll see some deviation. But we do have some areas that we need to continue to work.
Sure.
Not going to, not going to sugarcoat that. These are how our English as a second language students are doing in our schools, and so this is all of our ESL students and bilingual students that are combined into this, and this is all grades, all subjects. So approaches, we are at 77%, meets 49%, and masters 18% on all grades, all subjects for ESL students. And then this breaks that same thing out by subject for our ESL students. So I won't read every one of these to you, but they are in your reports tonight, and you can see by subject how that breaks out for RLA, math, science, and social studies for our English language learners. Overall, by and large, they're doing very well in CCISD, and that's something that we're very proud of. So the next part is our attendance rate, our dropout rate, and our graduation rates. So this data is, we call it lagging data, and so you'll notice that it's not reported, even though I'm reporting tonight on the 2324 taper, it's going to be a full two years behind. So we'll be looking at 23, 22, 23 school year. And so for our attendance rate, it was 91% the year before. We moved up to 92%, but we're still a little below where we need to be. So the moral of the story is we really need to continue to work on our attendance rate in CCISD. Our dropout rate, however, you want this number to be low, and so you can see that our percentage of dropouts is 0.4%, which is lower than the state and the region, and so we have fewer kids dropping out, lots of kids completing, and you'll see that in our next one when we talk about graduation rate. So, and then at the high school, sorry, I should also mention, our dropout rate is 1.3% for 2223, which is also below, and we want that to be below the state and the And then our graduation rate. So graduation rate is reported in three phases or three levels. You have your four-year graduation rate, your five-year graduation rate, and your six-year graduation rate, and the state only uses one of those in your accountability. So we use our five-year graduation rate at 92.6%. Graduation rate is something that we are continuing to work on. We lean heavily on Crossroads High School Campus to help us continue to do that, but sometimes those students may be a little bit later in graduation because they're recovering credits, so, but they do get them graduated, and that is great. All right. The next part of the taper focuses on college career and military readiness and post-secondary indicators like dual credit and those types of things. So I'm going to talk about those really quick in CCISD. Our CCMR is a bragging point for us here in Coppers Cove, so we had, this is also lagging data, so keep that in mind. This particular year in 2223, we had 92.2% of our students earning their college career military readiness indicator, which means by the time they graduated that the state says that they are ready for the workforce, college, or the military. And so we're very, very proud of that, and that indicator continues to trend upwards for us in CCISD. So you can see that 87, 85.6% of our students are also in college readiness. Quoting out of that voluntary indicator and career indicator, just looking at college ready, we're 85.6%, which is great. To indicate if they are prepared to not have to take any remedial courses in college. And so this is really wonderful that our students are passing their TSI and their TSI complete, indicating that they don't need remedial math or remedial English when they go to college. So that's great. And then this is our college prep courses. Students do take college prep courses at our high school in both reading, English Language Arts, and math, and so you can see that our students are doing well in those as well. Not every student needs to take college prep, so if they take and pass their TSI, then they don't need to take college prep. So this is another, another way for them to indicate that they are college-ready, if they take and pass those courses. And then our SAT ACT results. So you can see that we test, we try to test 100% of our students. So this year, we were able to test 89.5% of our students here at Coppers Cove, and 17.7% of our students in plane two and plane three were at higher degree. So that is in there where we have engineering work to make sure our students are well in class, 18% of students. And then, completion, this is actually a little bit higher, but we're recording now for two years ago. So we have 25%, 25.4% of our students take and earn credit for advanced dual credit courses in high school. So just over a quarter of our students is great, but we want to continue to have, you know, all our kids exposed to college coursework in high school. So that is a goal for us. And they break that out by subject so that you can see what our kids are taking. So that concludes my portion of the report tonight. I want you to know that the district's taper in full is listed on the CCISD website, and then each campus is given a taper by the state, and those are on the district website as well, and we always have paper copies if anyone should like one for tonight. So y'all are welcome to let me know, and I'll print one of those for you tonight. Any other questions?
No, but it is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience has a question, you're welcome to ask it at this time.
I'll just start off by saying, kind of answering Ms. Copen's question there about the state and the reason there's litigation and that there's no scores out there because of the lawsuits. The test was changed, as well as the standards was changed, and so you've got a different test, and then they moved the goalposts on, so, you know, it's very unfair for a test to be given, and you take the test, and then somebody later on says, oh, by the way, here's what you do to pass it. I mean, if you give somebody a test, they need to understand what it takes to get where you want to be. And so that was kind of the dilemma there, but just let me say how unfortunate that is for CCISD. You know, I'm four weeks on the job, and so I'm not taking credit for any of that, other than the fact that I was smart enough to find a district that's doing very well, applied for that job and moving. But in all seriousness, I want to give Amanda a lot of credit there as the leader of that area, and then say this, that it takes everybody along the way, from good parents and good homes with discipline in those homes, to the staff, and to the support that those teachers need on the campuses to make that happen, because you heard a lot of scores, but what does it really mean? That's the shame of it is, your district, your kids performed very well. We had great student outcomes, really and truly. There are a lot of people in this state that would love to trade places with the outcomes that's up there. Not only that, it gives kids hope and dreams that they can do things and they can succeed in their future, and so I'm proud to be a part of that. It's an honor. I know we're not where we want to be, but there's a lot of districts that slid backwards, and we didn't. You can go on SchoolDigger, SchoolDigger.com, and the state doesn't give those reports, but SchoolDigger does disaggregate data and shows that we're all fortunate to be standing where we're standing tonight. So again, I just want to thank everybody for their efforts into getting that where it is for the students of our district.
Thank you so much for that report, Mrs. Crowley. And now we'll go on to good things, and that's our recognitions. We'll start with our student recognitions, and I'm going to ask the school board if they'll go down to the table, please, along with Dr. Hawkins.
Now the fun part. Tonight, with our, starting with our student recognitions, our district recently held its UIL academic competition. Tonight, we're going to recognize the elementary schools that finished first, second, and third in the district. Lot of really incredible results in the district. Let's start. The winners this year in Coppers Cove ISD are Martin Walker Elementary, represented tonight by Principal Bree Anne Turner and several students. We have Logan Johnson, Addie Johnson, Gavin Miller, Barrett Anderson, Jolene Akui, and Lilly Yogan Vegas. Hey, we're proud of y'all. Congratulations. Trying to slow down. We're not going to have a tractor jam on my watch tonight. I'm determined. Second place this year was Williams Ledger Elementary tonight, represented by Principal Jenny Cresswell and a long list of students. Queen Ramonis, Eliana Galick, Molly Holmes, Harvey Kudera, Charlotte Kelly, Lorelei Wyndham, Kara Hall, Elsie Small, Jemaya Abel, Kelsey Kudera, Corey Green, Jackson Mahdi, John Mahdi, Adrian Fraser, Eugene Minus, and Dimitri Pomes. Tractor jam's almost over, Charlie. It's a good problem to have, though. Just another second. Okay. Our third-place team at this year's meet was Clements Parsons Elementary, represented tonight by Principal Robin Brappets, and we have five students from there. We have Gabriella Salak, Josiah Suter, Forever Best, Anna Gabriella, and Sarah Pack. Young man, can I get you next to Dr. Hawkins? All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay. On to staff recognitions now. The Texas School Counselor Association recently awarded four CCISD campuses its Crest Honors, standing for counselors reinforcing excellence for students in Texas for their continued improvement in providing school counseling programs to demonstrate effective communication and a commitment to obtaining results. This year's award was for efforts last school year. Four is the most we've had in our district in one year. We'll start with House Creek Elementary, which won the award for the third consecutive year with Christina Jacobs and former House Creek Counselor and current Director of Behavioral Support Services, Amy Simpson, named in the honor. For the second consecutive year, Martin Walker Elementary School, led by Counselor Hillary Newton, earned the Crest Award this year. We have two campuses in the district that were first-time honorees. Coppers Cove Junior High was honored this year, led by Councilors Julie Armstrong and Yoshinobu Harris. And our final campus getting honored tonight, Coppers Cove High School, won the Crest Award this year for the first time. Their campuses entered, were led by Counseling Coordinator Melissa Deepwall and Counselors Brenda Luz Gomez, Maria Villard, Jessica Salazar, and Amy Tripp.
Good job, Curtis.
All right, it's Mass X that this time looks like, right? I like the title that was put on this. It says, "Good Things."
That's right.
Recognitions. So now we have quite a long consent agenda. As most of you know, we have a workshop on Mondays and that's when we really get down to the nitty gritty and ask our questions and, uh, find out what we need to know as school board members to make good decisions. And so that meeting usually lasts quite a bit longer than our regular meeting, actually, because we're ready to go ahead and vote at this time because we have asked our questions and found out what we need to find out. So don't think that we're just sitting up here, everybody saying, "Oh yeah, sounds good, yes, yes, yes." We've talked about these things and discussed them and, and have, have discussed things very thoroughly. So, um, we will have our consent agenda first. And if Dr. Hawkins needs to, uh, comment on anything or answer a question, he'll be glad to do that. But our consent agenda today, uh, consists of the Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for our Workshop Meeting, January 13th, 2025, a special meeting, January 13th, 2025, a special meeting, January 14th, 2025, and our regular meeting, January 14th, 2025. Then under Personnel, we have a list of new hires for February. We also have a list of resignations for February and items exceeding $25,000. We have the Microsoft Software Renewal, SHI Quote 242460632 for $159,675.03 and this comes from budgeted funds. We have a District Spam Filter. This is Barracuda Software Renewal, TFE Quote 117718 for $43,280.64. Again, budgeted funds. We have the purchase of 31 interactive panels to be used at Copper's Cove High School and Crossroads High School. This is DIR CPO 5093, Quote PGZ 858. And it's for $68,313.15. Again, budgeted funds. Then we have repair of the elevator at SC Lee Junior High School. This is TK Elevator Corporation Sourcewell, $74,390.79. This comes from our fund balance. We have repair of the ROTC roof at Copper's Cove High School. This is Honey's Roofing LLC, Tips Number 24060402 for $33,685. And this also comes from fund balance. We have the purchase of Technical Services from Engage to Learn for $25,000 and this, uh, comes from the Blended Learning Grant Funds. We have a bunch, budget amendment and we have an out of state trip. It's one of our NAFIS Spring, the NAFIS Spring Conference, um, in Washington DC, March 8th through 12th, 2025. And then we also will consider and approve financial statements and payment of bills and consider and approve the appointment of Investment Officer for CCISD. We'll also consider and approve new courses for the 2025-2026 school year and Dr. Hawkins will be talking to you a little bit about what these items are. Then we'll consider and approve the Texas State Technical College MOU for the 2025-2026 school year. Consider and approve the Lamar State College Orange MOU for the 2025-2026 school year. And consider and approve the Interlocal Government Agreement regarding the implementation and administration of a youth diversion program with the City of Copper's Cove. And consider and approve the Inclement Weather Resolution. And lastly, consider and approve the employment of a Chief Technology Officer, a new one here in Copper's Cove. So, Dr. Hawkins, I know that's a big consent agenda. Some of it's, uh, pretty simple, but, uh, I know you have, uh, comments on, you'll have comma, comments on several of those items.
Yes, so I will start and work backwards, uh, on number 12. First of all, you know that we, uh, had to, uh, shut school down, uh, one day, uh, in the past 30 days. Texas, uh, allows, Texas law allows students, uh, to be in attendance for a minimum number of days and we have enough days, uh, minutes back, uh, banked into that, uh, uh, bank, uh, for the students to be forgiven for that day. Uh, so there's no repercussions for students. However, staff, uh, are not, uh, paid by days or paid by minutes and so ours is paid by days, contracts for days. And so in order for this to not be a gift of public funds, uh, the board has to consider this resolution, uh, tonight in order for that day to be forgiven. When I say forgiven, I say so, uh, with, with some sincerity, but at the same time, uh, anyone that knows anything about education knows that it's not a punch in and punch out time. Uh, the staff has been well beyond, uh, making up for this day. Uh, there's no way that any educator at the end of the school year, uh, works 187 days. Uh, they go well above and beyond their calendar. They go well in, above and beyond, uh, their date, the daily, uh, contracted hours. Uh, and so, uh, it's a shame you have to do that, but nonetheless, that's the legal, uh, compliance of it and that's what we will do and move forward. Um, I will go back to other things that are commonly not on here, uh, possibly the MOUs for Texas State Technical College and Lamar State College Orange. Uh, those are to expand and increase our course offerings, uh, in, in our high school. Uh, we believe in college for all. And when you say, "Well, college isn't for everybody." Well, we sometimes need to change our perception of what college is because college is technical courses as well. It's not just the academic track. Uh, to where Amanda had shown earlier, about 25% of our students are in the academic track and so there's 75% of them over in some other track. Uh, well, that track, uh, those students can equally earn college credits in those CTE classes as well. And so, uh, you, you ask me, do I believe 100% of our students at Copper's Cove High School can, uh, attain the college credit? Absolutely I do, without, without a shadow of a doubt. And so, uh, you know, we're gearing up to be very robust in that area. Uh, we will continue to, uh, talk about the things that we need to do to grow in that area, but this is a good first step in offering some different classes and offering, uh, students some opportunities, uh, that we are very excited about them growing in. So what is an Investment Officer? An Investment Officer under seven, I believe it is there, uh, seven, is, uh, the state of Texas requires every governmental entity to have Investment Officer training. You remember there was a junior college problem in the Panhandle, uh, 20 or 30 years ago. And so we've been blessed with just wonderful training ever since, uh, that time. That basically tells you that you need to make sure that your investments have liquidity about them and that you don't take a whole lot of risk. And so, uh, that six hours is due every two years and Cliff is going to be the recipient of that. It's part of his job and it's what he does. Uh, I've been through the training and I told him, "My deal is I will not go back until it changes." And so, um, so that's, uh, I just wanted to try to make sure that everybody was clear on what an Investment Officer is, but, um, our finances, our fund balance, our savings account, uh, is put into interest-bearing accounts. And so, uh, we want to make sure that they're drawing the maximum number of interest that we could get without being too risky. Uh, because at the end of the day, we do want to have our money make money, but at the end of the day, we don't want to lose that money. Uh, and so that's what that whole deal is and it is required by the state. Uh, aside from that, I'll go to number 13 now. We have a, a, a new gentleman sitting out here being considered to be a Bulldog and I'm very proud that he's here, uh, tonight. He's the well-dressed man on the front row. Uh, Mr. Robbins has had an extensive career in technology. I've had an opportunity to work with him, I think, on four different occasions. And so I've known him for well over a decade and a half. And, uh, and while his skill set and technology is, is, uh, superb, uh, the thing that sets him apart, uh, more than that is his ability to have a heart, uh, to impact and serve students. Uh, I've seen that firsthand. Uh, he's worked with me, uh, in Livingston twice. He is holding the same title and job in that district as he is being considered here for tonight. And I can tell you what a blessing that he will be, uh, for the students of this district because, uh, he, he brings superb customer service, uh, as part of who he is, uh, to the district, as well as, like I said, that heart for the kids and, and making sure that, uh, those we serve get their, our very best. So, anything else?
Doctor, I, I just want to make a comment. I, I wanted to make it when Amanda was up here about college and college readiness. And I know she, I don't know if she knows that off the top of her head, but our kids are college-ready. We have a lot of them get associate degrees. And I, I, though that's not part of the taper, I think it's very important for us to mention that because these kids go above and beyond. And we had a lot of kids this last year get associate degrees and even graduated before their high school graduation. So, uh, I just thought it was important because we've talked a lot about college readiness and our kids being ready to get out there in society. And it's, it was just some, I forgot to ask you, Amanda, you were gone so quickly.
I'm sorry.
You know, and you said you didn't want any hard questions anyway, so.
Last year, I, I can't give you the number for last year, but I can tell you at Christmas this year, we had 15 graduate and, uh, we're slated for 34 to graduate in May.
It seems like there might have been 16 total last year.
Yes, ma'am, that sounds right. That sounds about right.
Wow, so it's more than double.
This is the most in the history of the district. That's something to be very proud of. And you know, I was at the volleyball banquet and one of her children is one of the ones I'm fixing to talk about, but seven of the 11 volleyball girls, uh, are going to be on track come May to receive a high school diploma and associate's degree. And so that's phenomenal.
That's great.
All right. Are you in big trouble with Livingston right now? Stealing people?
It's okay.
You can answer that.
There's some things.
You can tell me later.
The return on the investment. So if I get in trouble, I want to make sure that we're getting a good return on our investment. I'll take one for the team.
And Maren, uh, our current Chief of Technology is going home and we're going to miss him, but we understand, we do like to, to get home and, uh, so, so we can understand why you're, why you're leaving us. But we, we have appreciated all you've done for Copper's Cove. You've done a lot.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right. Now we'll get into our informational items.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm so used to you and Mike.
I like to second that, Madam President.
I apologize, I forgot. We do need to, to vote on our, in our, on our action items, don't we? We have a motion by Mr. Gallin and a second by Mr. Traeger. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Madam President, real, comment real quick?
Yes.
Amanda, we have Tarleton, reference to MOUs for Technical College, right? And it's awesome, we have Tarleton, CTC, UT, A&amp;M. Yeah, may, it is the other one, right? And it's, we're continuing to focus.
And Ranger College.
And Ranger, yes, thank you, thank you. Well, you've increased that so much, right? I can't keep it in the brain bucket. But it's outstanding, we continue to meet the aspirations and dreams and opportunities where our students need to. And now we're bringing technical schools, right? Lamar, TCTC, right? Adding additional classes to the high school, EMT, barber, cosmetology. So we continue to focus on meeting the kids where their needs are today and in the future. So that needs, needs to be said.
Barbarism, right?
Barbarism.
Well, yesterday, I should, yeah, yesterday it was barbarism, today I'll call it barbary.
Curtis wanted a picture of me and the well-chris guy.
Yes. He's got blue and gold on.
That's right.
Any speeches at all? You're going to save that for later?
I am here to serve.
Okay. We're happy to have you. All right. Now we'll go to our informational items and, uh, they are, they are written and again, we talked about some of them. Um, I'm, I'm speaking for the board and I don't mean to be, but I was really, um, excited about our principal reports that were there. I know that took a lot of time for y'all to do, but maybe it didn't, maybe things are just so automatic, uh, that it didn't. I hope as we go along, it'll, it'll be easier and take less time for you. But I have to tell you, I for one really appreciated that because everybody always thinks we know everything that's going on in all our schools and we don't because we're not there very often. And so to have a report, to see what our students are doing and what our staff and parents are doing was really exciting for me this month and, and I look forward to reading those on a monthly basis. Um, but first we'll, uh, we have add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service according to the instruction sheet for Tasby Localized Policy Manual, update 124. Then we have our district enrollment report. We have those principal reports from all of our elementary, all of our schools, not just elementary, but, uh, elementary, junior highs and our high schools, Copper's Cove and Crossroads. Then we also have an athletic report and that was also very interesting. Uh, we have a, a sped report, uh, special, uh, that, that was interesting too. Then we have operations reports, which were school, the school nursing report, student services, maintenance report, the child nutrition report, and the transportation report. So lots of people were writing this, this, uh, uh, month and I, and like I said, I think we all appreciate, appreciated seeing those details that we never get to see. Also, we had a safety and security report and a technology report. And we have a human resources monthly report, which are the vacancies for our instructional personnel and also our vacancies for our support personnel. Uh, we have the Board of Trustees Calendar for February, March, and April. Not quite as busy for school board members as January always is, but January is very special for us and we all appreciated getting to go to as many of those as we could. I think some of our board members probably made almost every one of them. I missed out, I do sometimes because I have a birthday in January and I usually go away for a weekend and so I missed a couple of, uh, times, uh, being in our schools, which I, I truly hate to do that, but, um, I think everybody enjoyed their times in, in the different schools and getting to see especially the students. That was, that was lots of fun. The eating was nice too. You know, I told Tim, I said, "Don't take it, don't try to diet in January."
They ain't ahead of you.
It is not going to happen. There are too, there's too much good stuff everywhere. You, you just can't do it. You, you just can't do it in January. So, um, we will, uh, right now be going into a closed meeting. And, um, we will have a private consultation with our board attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice. The personnel, okay. Okay. To, uh, seek the advice of the district attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and/or on a matter which the duty of the attorney to the government body clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And then the last item, uh, there that we'll be speaking about during closed meeting will be discussing personnel or to hear complaints against personnel. And then, uh, after we, uh, finish, we will reconvene in an open meeting uh, before we adjourn our regular meeting. So we will be going into closed session, I believe, in Dr. Hawkins' office at, uh, 7:22 PM.
So Madam President, I'd just like to say one thing on information items. Uh, thank you to the young man back here that is videoing tonight. Uh, we, uh, have started videoing our board meetings. And so, uh, that will be uploaded to the district's website within forty-eight hours. And so, but I, I did want to make sure that we thank you for, for doing that for us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Uh, take a quick break if you need it and we'll convene in Dr. Hawkins' office, please.
There's a stationary holding area for just Uber personnel waiting on people to request.
Hello?